We got Jim Doan, Jim Duggan, Duke Schmidt. Okay, well, shall we get going here, Debbie?
Yes, already.
All right, great. Thank you very much then. We'll call to order our regular session for today, December 15th, and I'd like to call the December 15th Board Meeting to order and remind everyone to please mute your audio when not speaking, as well as state your name prior to making any comment or motion, and second, for an action item. So it's always challenging to hear everybody and to get the transcripting to work right. So we'll continue to keep those things in mind. I'll ask each Commissioner, please respond with a "here" when I call out their name. Commissioner Bagnell?
I'm here.
Good morning, good evening. Commissioner Doan?
Here.
Hello. Commissioner Duggan?
Here.
And Commissioner Schmidt?
I'm here.
Great. So we will begin this evening by having reports from the CEO and management staff. Tom?
Thank you. Good evening, and I don't know if you've noticed, but I have my Christmas tree behind me here trying to celebrate the holidays, so trying to be festive here. So let's see here. Portland crypto-spiridium results for the month of November 2021. The Portland Water Bureau reported 10 crypto-spiridium osis detections in water samples collected from the Bull Run headworks. Portland Water Bureau will continue increased sampling four times per week until there are at least three weeks without any detections. Complete results of Portland's crypto-spiridium monitoring are posted on the Portland City's website. Our January Talking Water, I'm asking you to save January 19th. Noon, we'll be doing a Talking Water about the 209th Farming Team Facility Project, which will break ground in this, in the spring of 2022. Our project team will share the site's future layout, explain the facility's function in the overall water system, and discuss the upcoming construction impacts to the surrounding area. Please join us to learn more about this project and the investment of today's water system funds for tomorrow's infrastructure. Pre-registration is not required for this event. Customers will be sent the invitation and meeting link by email. You can find the link at www.tvwd.org/talkingwater. 2022 emergency prep calendars are available now. I have mine. A copy of the new TVWD calendar is being mailed to customers by email request while supplies last. This year, the theme is emergency preparation. A supply of calendars was also provided to the Aloha Library, Cedar Mill Library, Cedar Hills Ready, and Community Action and Homes Association of Cedar Hills. Yes, there it is. Collections update. So in response to a question that the board posed on, at the November 17th regular meeting, the heat map hotspot near Walker Road and Highway 217 is the result of a single account with a large balance. The heat map noted this due to the disparity of the account balance in relation to those of nearby properties. This particular account originated as a residence but may have converted to a business. This may result in the class code being modified from residential to commercial. Staff account research has identified this account as well as 20 other accounts which are being researched for possible rate class changes. This data review is being done as part of the ARPA fund claiming process, as well as for the customer information or CIS implementation. So I hope that answers the questions on that. Thank you. And you know, it was, I think we had a lot of speculation of what that dot was, so. And then January 4th work session. So I apologize. I've got to pull back on, last week I asked to, made a recommendation from SAP that we cancel this work session. I now have to pull that back. New information arose during the last week that requires us to hold the January 4th work session that we had recommended to cancel. A detailed presentation on the WWSP will be provided at the work session with an opportunity for the board to ask questions. So I apologize for that, but what a way to start the new year. And then Safety Minute, unless there's questions for me, I'm gonna turn this over to our very joyful Clark Balfour, and he will share with you the Safety Minute and Department Report this evening. Clark?
Okay, thanks, Tom. Good evening, Commissioners. And Paul Matthews is going to advance my slides through. So Paul, would you tee up the Safety Minute? And there it is. Holiday fire prevention. So you know, this, it's holiday season, like Tom said, and here we are. Here's just a few things to consider. Probably things that maybe you're not involved with, but a few things to consider. So go ahead, Paul. So holiday fire, trees get dry, other reeds and strings of bough, and those things, they get dry too. So you know, once again, use only decorations that are flame-retardant and not flammable. Check your lights each year and discard if there's any kind of freeing or excessive wear. You know, I'm guilty of this one. Don't link more than three strands of lights, and I admit that there's that time when it's just so much easier to do that fourth one, but really, don't do that. And then, you know, turn off everything before you go to bed or leave your home. I mean, it's kind of cool to have everything lit up, but turn it off and have a good night's sleep. Paul, go ahead. As far as further prevention things, keep your live tree away from heat sources and room exits, so that you have a place to exit. Water your live tree daily to keep it from becoming dry. And once it becomes dry, and boy, you sure know it, because every needle is falling off, discard it promptly. And you know, this photo made me think, that's the kind of watering can I need. It seems like every time I get under to water the tree, I'm down there and I have now created the next flood, and it always seems to hit me. So this is actually on my list for holiday gifts. Go ahead, Paul. So you know, some people use candles, but consider using the battery-operated flameless candles. They're kind of cool. And, but if you do use them, make sure you've got stable holders. They're not going to get knocked down easy. You know, keep a good distance, at least 12 inches from anything that can burn, and always never leave a burning candle unattended, because you could have a bad result. Next, please. And this would be the example of a bad result. Three kids, one match, 1,000 degrees. So avoid this scenario and have a happy holiday. And that concludes the Safety Minute.
Oh, oh, that is Clark's personal birthday card. He donated his house to burn to learn.
We, that's a long story, and I'm glad to share it offline, but yeah, that, we actually, that was a planned burn, and we took that photo because it was a, it actually turned out to be a really nice card. So we sent out a zillion of those. Bernice, you got one? So it's a good memory, because it was many, many years ago. But you know, whenever I want to kind of emphasize that fire-related story, I kind of come back to that photo. And so I apologize, but you know, this is sort of writer's license here in order to use your own stuff. So there you go.
And I remain convinced that those three boys were secretly happy that a lot of their secrets went up in flames that night.
You know, we'll never know. We never will know. And even though they're now well into adulthood, they, they're not revealing anything. So there you go.
Oh my gosh, he does still have the same Raiders hat on.
You know, I didn't even notice that till now. Yes, I have, I haven't changed my wardrobe too much in all those years. So there you go. Anyway, okay, well, let's, let's just move on to the department report then, if you're ready, Paul. So this is a legal department report, and you know, we give this every few months, and I take this opportunity to just tell you about the issues that tend to come through. This is not a detailed thing at all. And very nice, Paul, same hairstyle. I see the chat there. Okay. In any event, you know, so while you'll see tasks on here that we're working on, these aren't like the kinds of things that we're working on day in, day out. They're, they're just, they're more sporadic things, at least from the legal department perspective, where questions come up, or there's something to be reviewed. And then, once that is answered or resolved, the staff goes on and continues to work, and then maybe some other issue comes up later. So as you look at this list, don't think that everything is on fire, no pun intended, but just are things that come up from now and again, and then things that have come up since the last time I spoke to you, and probably a little bit into the future too. So Paul, please advance. So we've got, here's a couple of ongoing matters. The first one, and probably the major one, is the customer information system, major upgrade and conversion to a new utility billing system, and a lot of other things that are going to enable folks to do their work, and that's a contract that we have with Open. It's in the middle of implementation right now. We're starting to hit a key phase. We've had a couple of questions come up recently about how we, how we implement going forward to be at Go Live, I think in May or June. Andrew Carlson can give a better guess of that. But those kinds of ongoing questions that come up, and I think we're moving in the right direction, and there's a lot of work to do. And fortunately, it's other people, smarter people, that are doing that work. So I'm really happy about that. With respect to Beaverton, we are looking at a couple of things right now. One is up on Kemmer Road. So that's at the very top of Cooper Mountain. And you can see from the photo here that there is a good-sized square rectangular piece of property that's marked city property. You see an existing reservoir there, and the city of Beaverton is building a second tank. If you look to the left, you see the property that's marked TVWD property, and we have a reservoir there. That is at our upper zone. I think it's the highest zone in the district. And what we are working on with Beaverton now is to have an inner tie between those two reservoirs, and by constructing the orange pipeline that you see there in the photo. And then with that, we would be able to push water to Beaverton, and similarly, Beaverton could push water to us, depending upon scheduled maintenance, emergency conditions, those sorts of things. But most importantly, this has particular interest to us, because we could, for a period of time, say a couple of years, I'm not sure exactly what, but for a period of time, we could draw water from Beaverton into our system through the orange pipeline, while we did some very, very necessary work on other pump stations that we have in the Cooper Mountain area, and other system improvements, for instance, the Farmington Road Facility that Tom mentioned during his report. And, and so that would provide us supply for this period of time while we're doing some significant system improvements. And then at that point, we would be back online, and the line would convert into a more of an emergency or mutual aid kind of of pipeline. So we're working on that. We're hoping that we can bring that to you in January, along with the second piece, and that's the Walker Road Connection. And if you recall, we, some time ago, we approved a emergency connection agreement with the city of Beaverton at Walker Road and Shendel, essentially 158th and Walker or Walker and Shendel, just a little bit west of 158th. So what we're doing there is Beaverton is refining their separation plan for that area, and we're looking at making some amendments to the, not to the agreement itself, but to the exhibits to that agreement, to determine the area that we would provide some service to, to make sure that they have fire flow, not day-to-day flow, but fire flow. So those two things are working. We're also hopeful that we can bring that back to you in January. And with that, then I think we probably would be in a position to move forward, and I don't, Kerry Pack could probably give a better answer as to whether there are other Beaverton separation issues on the horizon, but I, from my perspective, I think this would take care of us for a while. So let's go forward, Paul. Okay, contracting. So we've been, we've been doing a lot of things. You know, there's always project documents and project questions that come up, just with all the things that we have going on, day-to-day things. But we're also going through a review of our contract templates, because, you know, we, with the retirement of Wendy Burns, we brought on a new purchasing person from, from another organization, and we found it useful to essentially review our templates, our typical documents with her, and try to figure out if there are, are better ways to do it, if there are improvements that can be made. And so we've been working on those things. I think we've made our documents a little better, and so that has required more time, more commitment from me and others. You know, as with any project, there's those management kinds of questions. Is the contractor doing the work? Is the, is the work proceeding in a timely fashion? Are folks getting paid? Are we having claims by subcontractors or material suppliers, those sorts of folks? So those are always, those are always on the, on the table, so to speak. And then finally, we're going out with the Taylor's Ferry RFP, and, and that's going to be a pretty significant project. You know, that the contractor selected, it will be, it's going to be complicated, in my view. It's going to be a lot of work. We're looking at getting some grant funds for that and other things. So the Taylor's Ferry Rehabilitation Project, I think is going to be very important, and it's going to require time going forward for everybody. Go ahead, Paul. And then, of course, we've got some other items, and, and near and dear to your heart are the rules and regulations. We're, we're making some amendments to those to be more specific in the terms of fees, charges, and civil penalties that we can charge to folks for unauthorized use of the system, tampering, that sort of thing. And lo and behold, they're on your agenda for tonight. So you will be able to check that box here in a little bit, where we'll both amend the ordinance with a second reading and adoption, and then we will also have adoption of a new resolution that, that fixes the fees and civil penalties. One that has been hanging fire for a while, and it was a planned hang fire, is the Willamette Intake Facility, Willamette Water Supply System easement finalization. So if you recall, we're upgrading the intake in, at Wilsonville, the WIF, and then with that comes the raw water pipeline out through the park on property jointly owned by Wilsonville and TVWD, that then connects, connects to the, the raw water pipeline system through Wilsonville and onto the treatment plant, and then obviously the finished water from the treatment plant onto the service areas. One of the things we had with part of our agreement with Wilsonville, and coming through the park on our jointly-owned property, was that while they granted us an easement, we would not record it until the pipeline was finished, and there was a as-built survey of the center line that would then be incorporated into the description, and then at that point we would record. And we knew that it was going to be sometime in '22 when that work was finished, that we would be ready to then actually record the easement. So that's coming soon. And I think, I think Dave Kraska reported to us that it should happen here in the earlier part of '22. I may not be entirely sure on that, but I am really looking forward to getting that description, getting that easement recorded, and then that will be the final piece of the WIF agreements put into final form and finished. And then, of course, finally, we have one pending litigation item. We've talked about it before. I had hoped that we would be able to talk about it in executive session prior to this meeting tonight. It just hasn't quite matured to the point where we're bored, I guess, you know, bored head nods or consensus, is the way to put it, would be required. But I think that is coming soon. So, so coming soon to a theater near you will be a discussion of pending litigation executive session. Go ahead, Paul. And I think that is it. So unless there are questions, I will, I will stop, and you'll see me in a few minutes on another topic.
Thank you, Clark. Any questions for, for Clark this evening? Not hearing any? Sounds good. Thank your staff for their involvement in preparing that presentation, Clark.
They, they always know that they're appreciated. Thank you.
Right on. All right. Next item is our reports by Commissioners, our reports of meetings attended, and our Commissioners will now report on recent meetings attended. And as always, we'll begin with Commissioner Bagnell.
Because I am like right at the front of the alphabet. So my meetings attended, I don't have very many, but they date back to, the first one was the 18th of November, when I attended the Westside Economic Alliance meeting to hear Josh Leonard, the Oregon State Economist, to talk about the state of the Oregon economy. And as always, very, very interesting and compelling kind of talk. On the 7th of December, I attended the Board Work Session where we talked about the Willamette Water Supply Project, and we talked about our branding update brought to us by Andrea, and really nice to hear what's going on with that. And then, of course, tonight's meeting. That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagnell. We will now proceed with Commissioner Doan.
Great. I attended the work session on the 2nd of December. I had a meeting, virtual meeting with Todd Sanders concerning performance appraisals. I had a discussion with the CEO concerning the annual staff increases on the 10th. I had a computer set up Tuesday to meet the new criteria. I had a meeting with Andrea, actually an in-person meeting to discuss color issues, and then tonight's meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Doan. Commissioner Duggan?
Pretty short list for this month compared to other months. December 2nd, I attended the Willamette Water Systems, Willamette Water System Commission meeting and executive session. On the 7th, I attended the Board Work Session that Commissioner Bagnell detailed so eloquently. On the 14th yesterday, I had a Board Agenda Planning Meeting with President Sanders and CEO Tom Hickman. Also, yesterday evening, I attended the Washington County CPO Number One Meeting, where Tom Hickman and Andrea Watson facilitated a presentation along with Clean Water Services on the past, present, and future of Washington, or of water in Washington County, and then tonight's meeting. And by the way, I was really impressed with Tom and Andrea. They were able to keep the energy up all the way until the late hour of nine o'clock, and they did a very good job of discussing the water system and how it relates with Clean Water Services. So, good job.
Thank you. And if I could just say, considering our mornings started together at, I think, seven something AM, it was kind of a long day.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes, I also attended the work session and tonight's meeting, and that's it for me.
Fantastic. Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. And for myself, my list is this. On the 19th, I met with our consultant, Norm Eater, to learn one question, and that was, how does the SDAO work for TVWD? And he kindly sat or walked with me for quite a while, explaining what the SDAO does, and what it does for TVWD, and how it can support us in the future. And then on the 22nd, I met with Tom and asked him basically the same question. I was like, well, what is this SDAO thing? And should I go to the conference in this winter? Is it worth, you know, is it worth talking to people and getting to know things better? On the 30th, and then again, on the 7th, I met with Tom to talk about some of the staffing changes we've experienced, and some of the regional water issues that ultimately became part of the talk that Commissioner Duggan just mentioned. And then, let's see, the executive work session on the 7th, on the 14th, the meeting with our Vice President, Duggan, and the CEO for Agenda Planning, and then tonight, the 15th monthly Board Meeting. So that is it for my meetings attended, which would then move us into our next item, which would be our Commissioner Communications first, and that would be, I'm sorry, topics to be related, raised by the Commissioners, and I wanted to see if there are any topics to be raised by the Commissioners this evening. Okay, I believe that's eight seconds by the Dave Kraska rule, and so we can move on to the next item. That would be public comments. And public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons this evening who would like to comment? Okay. Well, not hearing any this evening, then. We can move on to our first formal item for the evening, which is our consent agenda. And I see Paul has been to the school of slide changing, taught to him by Kerry Pack. So he seems to be a PhD candidate. Fantastic, Paul. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. In this evening, we are to approve the November 17th, 2021 regular meeting minutes, approve the December 7th, 2021 work session minutes, approve and authorize the Board President to execute the Second Amendment to the employment agreement between the District and the Chief Executive Officer, and adopt Resolution 13-21, a resolution establishing regular monthly meeting dates of the Board of Commissioners for calendar year 2022. And then lastly, to adopt a resolution authorizing the Chief Executive Officer, Tom Hickman, to be the designated agent who is authorized to execute all required forms and documents for the purpose of obtaining financial assistance for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Jim Doan. I so move?
This is Commissioner Duggan, second. Sorry, Bernice.
Not a worry.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'd like to ask our district recorder to provide the rule call, please.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everybody. The motion passes. Our next item this evening is our business agenda. And this evening, um, we will consider accepting report of the independent auditor and the district's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2021 and 2020. This evening, we'll have a staff report by our chief financial officer, Paul Matthews.
Well, good evening, President Sanders and commissioners. Uh, this is, uh, kind of an annual event for us where we come bring your, uh, audit, uh, for your acceptance. Uh, tonight, brief presentation, I'm going to give you just a couple of quick updates on the audit, and then I want to turn it over, uh, to our auditors, Moss Adams. We have Julie Dismoni here to present as well, as well as Laurel Stevens. Uh, they have information to answer any questions that you might have. But before we get to Moss Adams, a couple of things I just want to point out. You might, uh, recall that we've typically provided you what we call a CAFER, a Conference Annual Financial Report. Well, apparently we've learned that in South Africa, that has a different, uh, connotation. Apparently it's an ethnic slur spelled slightly differently. So GFOA has encouraged us to, uh, refrain from using that, and we have embraced that. So we are providing you with the annual comprehensive financial report, but rest assured, it's essentially the same document and the same concept. Uh, the other thing I want to point out is that, um, last year, you would not have seen the Willamette Water Supply System, uh, within our documents, other than an investment in our joint venture. Now, uh, after, uh, the Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB, has adopted Statement Number 90, uh, the Willamette Water Supply System this year is considered a component unit of TVWD. So you'll see some of that information presented in our annual conference finance report. Uh, I want to point out just a couple of things before we switch here. This is kind of the end of that financial cycle for us. It starts, uh, within the finance group as we prepare the financial, the, uh, strategic planning that feeds into our budget process and the financial strategies that we presented to you actually back in January, February, March, and the financial plan that we, that you adopted or approved, rather, in, uh, May. And then the budget, and then we execute against that. And, uh, we come full circle here now with the accountability section of this, which is to, uh, look at the, um, uh, the results in the audit. And we bring in our independent auditors to, to look at that. Yes, and Commissioner Duggan, it is called an ACFER. That's what we've, uh, how we've pronounced that. Uh, so in any event, it is the full sweep. We celebrate the end of the year by celebrating the acceptance of the audit. Uh, once it is accepted by the board, I expect to get a letter, a rep letter, representations where we make to the auditors tomorrow morning. Sign that thing off and we'll get it filed with the Secretary of State's office. I want to, before I turn this over to, um, to Julie and her team, I want to, uh, first recognize, uh, our controller, David Schick, who is the one that leads us through this entire effort. And David's, uh, on the call with us tonight. And, uh, if, uh, there are hard questions that I can't answer, I'll, I'll ask, uh, David to do that. But David and his team, once again, have, uh, pulled together. And, and keep in mind that not only are we doing the financial statements for TVWD, and we do that in the form of the ACFER, uh, but we're also, uh, preparing the financial statements for the other joint ventures that we, that we manage. The, the WIF, the WWSS, and the WRWC. Uh, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Julie and her team and, uh, let them, uh, make their presentation to you. At the end, I'll come back and see if you have any questions, uh, for, for me. Julie, do you want to take over?
Sure. Thank you for having me. I think I'm going to do this right. Um, well, we'll, we'll try. We'll see if it happens right. Um, but once again, Julie Dismoni, I'm the audit partner in charge of the TVWD audit and the component units as well. Uh, please have Laurel Stevens, who's the audit manager, um, who's the one that actually does all the, uh, the, the hard work on the audit, uh, with me tonight. She's going to present a couple of slides towards the end. Uh, but the first thing we just want to talk to you about is, is give you the results of the audit. So we are completed with the audit. Uh, we will be issuing it, uh, promptly after this meeting, uh, barring any, any significant questions by the board. Um, and what we want to chat with you tonight about is, um, give you an idea of the engagement team. What we did is, of course, the audit, what were some of our significant audit areas and talk through those. Um, talk through our opinions and results and reports, uh, required communications, a little bit on some audit adjustments and internal control matters. I promise you, this looks like a much longer list than it actually is. We'll get through this promptly because I know you've got a long meeting tonight. Uh, we just wanted to provide you with who is on the audit engagement. So this is, uh, this is your audit team from Moss, uh, it was, uh, from Moss Adams. Um, and we had asked for Jack Strathaird to be here tonight, but he had some competing, um, events. So, uh, he, he spent quite a bit of time through your audit as well as his new, new in charge position as a result of the audit. So here's what we did for you. We, we completed an independent, um, evaluation of your financial statements and financial reporting. Uh, we, we did that by using a whole headset of, of, uh, procedures between looking at internal controls, analytical procedures, tests of details, uh, confirmations, just a lot of different process procedures in order to come to an opinion upon your financial statement. Uh, we also assisted, um, with, we reviewed the, uh, ACFER. I, I guess that's the name. I had heard it prior to, to Paul calling it ACFER, but I think it's going to stick because we, we need acronyms. We can't not talk in acronyms in this business. Uh, so the ACFER, uh, for compliance was generally accepted accounting principles. We wanted to make sure that it was in line with what the GFOA, uh, expects, uh, in the certificate of excellence that you'll be going for once again this year. We also, as a portion of our audit, because you are in the state of Oregon, you are required to call what's called, the required to follow is called the Oregon Minimum Auditing Standards. Uh, it's about 13 different compliance areas that we have to look over, really three bigger ones. Um, one over budgeting and what you do from a budgeting perspective, two insurance, just making sure that you're maintaining. And then contracting is by far the third one. Uh, we are purchasing contracts. It's all in accordance with state laws. So we design procedures and embed them within the audit process in order to place an opinion upon, uh, whether you're in compliance with Oregon Minimum Standards. And then the final piece of the entire audit process is today, is communicating our findings and our results to the board, to, to those charged with governance of this body today. Just to give you an update on a couple of significant audit areas, and again, these aren't all the areas, but we do spend quite a bit of time. So I wanted to talk through this. Um, obviously you have a lot going on from a capital standpoint. So there's a lot of, of, uh, expenditures that are going towards construction, work in progress and construction related items. Uh, we got to make sure that that's right. Uh, we have to make sure the procurement of those is correct, that they're getting placed in the right area. And once they get placed in the service, that they're being depreciated over an appropriate time period. So we spend quite a bit of time in that area. Also, another area that's incredibly important is customer billings and accuracy of those billings. Your rate pairs, um, are where you get your cash flow and they want their bills to be absolutely correct. And so we spend a lot of time both in what are the controls, what do the humans do to make sure, uh, that the, the customer billings are correct? But also because it's a massively automated process in a lot of ways, we spend a tremendous amount of time sitting in the IT environment. So what is happening with change management? How do we make sure that, that the IT system is, is got good information coming in and that what it is doing with that information is as accurate as can be, um, and is in line with the expectations? We already talked a little bit about the Oregon Minimum Standards and, um, it was nice to, Paul, Paul alluded, or alluded, you didn't allude to, you said, uh, regarding the component unit reporting. So, uh, what's interesting about that, really the only thing you're going to see is you don't have to what we call blend it into the financials. It's not added into TVWD. The, the treatment of how WWSS was last year is the same as far as how you recorded it as a joint venture. But what needs to show is a separate line. You've got a separate, uh, column within your financial statements now that just shows, uh, all the information from, from WWSS. Uh, so that is in there. That will likely, um, barring any significant ownership changes of the entity, uh, that will likely be in there moving forward as well. Right. I think I'm on the, is this where you're taking over? Okay, I'm going to be quiet.
Yes. Thanks, Julie.
Yeah.
So this is just summarizing what you'll see in our audit and opinion reports, which Julie discussed earlier. So for the financial statements, TVWD will receive a clean or unmodified opinion. No reportable findings in the Oregon Minimum Standards Report. And then we're very happy to report in the communication to those charged with governance, which is a separate deliverable you'll receive outside of the ACFER. No material weaknesses or no significant deficiencies. Do you want to go to the next slide, Julie? Thank you. So in that communication to those charged with governance, the slide summarizes some of the information that you'll see in that four-page document. So it'll discuss the auditor's responsibility under auditing standards as well as any significant accounting policies at the district. No major changes in accounting policies for TVWD this year. And similarly, no changes in management judgments or accounting estimates. We'll also note in there that we had no disagreements with management and no difficulties in performing the audit as well as discuss if they were management consulted with any other accountants, which there weren't none. And then last item I want to mention is there was one audit adjustment noted this year. So this means that this was an adjustment we discovered through our audit procedures that you will see reflected in the financial statements. So this item was below what we would require TVWD to post to their financial statements, but it was above our, what we call our posting threshold. So we were required to bring it to management's attention. The management did decide to post it. So this happened when we were looking at work in progress, property planning, equipment, current projects. So there was one project that was still in work in progress as of 6:30 that actually should have been capitalized and was in service. So this amount was moved to in-service. And then there was about, I think, a $500 depreciation effect as well that the district did record and is reflected in the financial statements as well. Otherwise, happy to report no past audit adjustments or no other recommendations that we noted during our audit this year.
Perfect. So we, we included in the slide deck, uh, contact information if you do have any questions for us. But ultimately, I'm sorry, we didn't put happy holidays. We should have put happy holidays on the slide. Didn't think of that until Clark's, uh, presentation. But, um, appreciate all the hard work of the district, um, management and accounting department. Um, the audit is a tedious event. Um, and this year, especially with all the new standards and just different things, uh, it continues to be. So we really appreciate all the hard effort and a lot of effort that went into the audit. And we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Laurel. And thank you, Paul.
Well, actually, uh, President Sanders, I'm going to go ahead and just kind of wrap here real quick, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. My apologies for interrupting.
No problems at all. Uh, so yes, uh, we are asking that the board by motion accept the report of the independent auditors and the district's annual conference finance report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021 and 2020. And again, uh, do want to thank everybody, their contribution, David and his team, for everything they've done to bring us to, uh, to an end on this. And with that, I will turn it back to you, President Sanders.
Great. Thank you, Paul. Again, sorry for interrupting. Um, so to repeat what Paul just said, uh, do we have a motion and a second to accept the report of the independent auditor and the district's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2021 and 2020?
This is Commissioner Bagnell. I would like to move that we accept the CAFER.
Uh, this is Dick. I will second.
Very good. Um, at this time then, I'd like to ask our district recorder to provide the roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Sorry, my mute button is messing with me, but yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, and the motion now passes. And it sounds like we need to advise Paul to acquire some kind of NFT blockchain ownership of the phrase ACFER. So Paul, that is my recommendation to you. You can sell it for $300,000.
I need to, I need to let you know that, uh, it was actually, uh, David Schick who, uh, taught me to, uh, pronounce it ACFER. So I think David will need to move on that one, President Sanders.
Very good. Then David, good luck with that. We hope you make millions of dollars. All right. Fantastic. Um, all right. Uh, the next item in our business agenda is item B, which is to consider approving the TVWD representative appointments and officer nominations for the Barney Reservoir Joint Ownership Commission and the Joint Water Commission for calendar year 2022. And Tom's going to lead us in this discussion, please.
Yes. So, uh, this is a continuation from the, uh, prior meeting last week. Uh, and, uh, we, we decided to push it over to here. What we're looking for is it's our turn in the rotation, uh, to, uh, have the chair. And so, um, what we're looking for is do we want, did we want to make some sort of change? And so, um, I did have a discussion with President Sanders about this. Um, and he and Commissioner Schmidt had a discussion. And there was some thought that maybe, uh, uh, Commissioner, President Sanders would want to step into that role and, uh, possibly Commissioner Schmidt might want to consider a different role. So, um, that's, that's really the, the table that we're setting here. Um, and so we're looking for, is that what we want to do? Uh, who is it that we want to recommend to, uh, the, uh, JWC as being, uh, the, the president or chair?
Well, yes, it's true. Dick and I have talked, um, about, uh, trying to increase my role in some of the activities within the board's, um, various commission roles. As everybody knows, um, I have kind of a minimal, uh, participation level in some of these commissions, partially because I, I still work for a living. Um, and that interferes with some of it, but this was one in particular with meeting was once a quarter and typically on a Friday afternoon that I felt, um, I could participate in. Uh, I don't think in my mind, I was recommending that I be the, um, necessarily the chair. We have a couple of other members of the board who are also, uh, involved in the JWC and the Barney, um, commissions. Uh, but I was working with Dick on just trying to get myself kind of, um, a little more integrated and feeling less guilty about my lack of participation in the various, um, commission activities. So that's where I think the discussion sits right now, unless Dick has a different view of things. Well, I'll take it. Dick doesn't really see it any differently than that. Perfect.
So Commissioner Sanders, I, I would just like to say that I, I'm really excited about the idea of getting you involved with the Joint Water Commission. That's a, that's a really, really interesting group and obviously very important to us, especially as Hiltford is our partner in the Willamette Water Supply Project. And these are water, these water sources are very, very integrated and very important to us. And I, I'm, I'm thrilled that you want to be involved in it. I think that's just peachy.
Commissioner, this is Jim Doan. Commissioner Sanders, uh, because of my hearing difficulties and the lag in, uh, captioning, I should not have a leadership role in the JWC. I can, uh, contribute to the, uh, to the team effort. But if things become contentious, I cannot react fast enough because the captioning lags by five or 10 seconds. And things can really get weird in that period of time when I'm just sort of smiling. And, uh, so anyway, I would, I would not like to be in either the, uh, the lead role or the assistant role. But certainly with the JWC, I could be the third member.
Excellent. Okay. Uh, Dick, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, no, I'm, uh, good with whatever happens.
Okay, thank you.
It, it's been a really smooth writing henceforth, so. It's been a really smooth writing henceforth, so I'm good with everything.
All right. Great. Thank you, Dick. Well, if that's the case then, and we do need, we do need to have someone as the chair, I think I would volunteer to be the chair for the JWC Barney Reservoir Joint Ownership Commission for calendar year 22, but I think, I don't think I can make a motion for myself.
Well, I will move that you do that, and I want to reassure you in case somebody hasn't already, you get a script. It'll be okay.
You actually can make your own motions.
Oh, you can?
Yes. Robert's rules allow that.
Well, I would really be more comfortable if someone else did it, though. It'd make me feel more loved.
Well, I'm, I, here's, as I said, I would love to move that Commissioner Sanders be the chair serving for TVWD on the Joint Water Commission. But what I am left a little unsure about, and goodness knows, it might be because an earpiece fell out and I missed something, but one of us needs to go off. So is Dick Schmidt going off? Am I going off? Because I think we really value Commissioner Dome's years of longevity with the JWC and value his participation in that, really excited about Commissioner Sanders stepping in. But we can't have both me and Dick, and I think both me and Dick are willing to go off to make that happen. So which one of us goes off?
Dick, you're on mute.
I'm good with going off. I do need a break.
That's okay with you, Bernice? We would keep you on, and Dick would leave the commission for now. And the three members would be, I would be chair. And then either one to be, either one of you could be the vice chair. And then I think, actually, I think Jim Dome recommended he be the third. So you would be our vice chair?
Yeah, that's what I heard. So then I would be the alternate. And Dick, if you're sure, will give you a break.
So the, one other, one other piece to this. So and what this says is that whoever's designated as chair for JWC will also serve as the agency's representative for the Barney Commission.
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that that was understood, and we, we're there.
Okay, sounds good. Do we need to have a motion then? Or I think Bernice has made the motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Duggan, I'll second the motion and say that the funnest part about being on the JWC is the August or September tour, where you get to go up and drive on the old logging roads and go visit the Barney Reservoir and see the diversion pipe over to the Tuolton. It's quite a tour if you haven't been able to be on it yet. But with that, I second the motion, and I congratulate that we're able to get an amicable representation there.
Yes. All right. Fantastic. Well, yes, thank you, Dick, for allowing me to take this position and feel just a little bit less guilty. So with that, I'd like to ask Debbie, our district recorder, can you please provide us with a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes. And, and the tour also gives, lets you do like a fake valve turn. It's really cool. Just saying.
Commissioner Dome?
Ah, yes, and I hope there's no tour this summer because of the pandemic.
Commissioner Duggan?
Ah, yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Great. The motion passes, and thank you again, everybody, for, yeah, like, like Commissioner Duggan just said, for very amicable communications there. All right. Item number C, consider approving a motion for a second reading by title only and adopt, adopt Proposed Ordinance 01-21, Amending and Restating Rules and Regulations to Provide for Civil Penalties for Unauthorized Work Upon or Tampering With the District's Water System. And we will once again hear from this evening, Clark Belfour.
Thank you, commissioners. So this is a topic that we've been talking about for the last couple of months. So we are now up to the second reading and final adoption of the ordinance, which is our rules and regulations governing the use of the district system. And this is what clarifies the ability of us to charge civil penalties for unauthorized work or tampering with the district system. And as you recall from our earlier reports, it's, it's a matter of, really, we've had these provisions for customers. We have not had quite the clarity on how these types of provisions might apply to contractors doing work on private construction projects where they make connections or other turn valves or do other things for the district system. And, and that could cause adverse results, you know, unless we're, we've authorized it, we're there to inspect, we're there to supervise, do all those sorts of things. So this, this clarifies that weakness that we had in our ordinance. You've considered this once. You had your first reading by title only at the last, at the November meeting. And now it's time for the motion and a second to read by title only and adopt Ordinance 01-21. And as all ordinance are by statute, it will be effective 30 days from the date of adoption tonight. So essentially, January 15 of 2022. So unless there are questions, I would ask you to have that motion approved to read by title only, and then we can vote and, and adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you, Clark. And at this point then, do we have a motion and a second to read by title only the draft ordinance?
This is Dick. I will so move.
And this is Commissioner Bagnall. I will second.
Great. Thank you very much. And in this case, what we'll be doing is saying, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Are there any opposed? Not hearing any then? The motion passes, and I'd invite staff to read the ordinance title into the record. Clark, you are muted.
Golly, I, Debbie, would you mind reading the title only? I don't, I don't have it in front of me. I apologize for that.
No problem. Let me just pull it up really quick. So Ordinance 0121 is an ordinance amending or restating rules and regulations to provide for civil penalties for unauthorized work upon or tampering with the district's water system.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is, that is very embarrassing. I'm sorry that I felt like I had this thing memorized, except for the title. So I'm busted. Sorry. There you go.
Well, in that case, we will not only forgive you, we'll move on and pretend it never happened. And I'll ask if there is a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance 01-21, amending and restating the rules and regulations to provide for civil penalties for unauthorized work upon or tampering with the district's water system.
This is Commissioner Bagnall. I so move.
This is Jim Dome. I'll second.
Fantastic. And again, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Not hearing any then? The motion passes. And now on item D this evening, we're going to consider adopting Resolution 14-21, a resolution restating and amending Resolution 10-21 to establish civil penalties, fines, and other charges for the Tuolton Valley Water District effective January 15, 2022. And once again, we'll hear from Clark.
Thank you, President Sanders. So this, this is the, this is the other shoe. In our rules and regulations, we provide that the board by resolution will annually fix fees, rates, and charges, rates for water service, water consumption, fees for connections, those sorts of things. We do that on an annual basis. With the ordinance that you just passed and the imposition or the ability to impose at least civil penalties, in reviewing the last resolution that you adopted, that annual rate resolution, we thought that it would be better to move some items from existing Exhibit B and put them in a new Exhibit C, which also included the civil penalties. So what this resolution does is amend the prior and, and adds the amended Exhibit B and the new Exhibit C and makes it part of the original rate or resolution that you passed. And that will now carry forward until you take further action to amend whenever you determine to do that. So this is just a resolution now that puts the fee into effect, and it will be effective on the same day as the ordinance goes into effect, January 15 of 2022. And that is, the action required here is just a motion, second, and vote. No reading by title only, so I will not be embarrassed in any way, and we can go forward with that.
Thank you, Clark. Okay then, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the Resolution 14-21, a resolution restating and amending Resolution 10-21 to establish civil penalties, fines, and other charges for the Tuolton Valley Water District effective January 15, 2022?
This is Commissioner Bagnall. I so move.
This is Dick. I will second that.
Great. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask our district recorder to please provide the roll call vote.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Dome?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Great. All right. It sounds as though the motion passes. That being the last item on our agenda today, we will now be ready for adjournment. I will remind the commissioners that we have executive session following this meeting this evening. There being, however, there being no further business before the board, this meeting is adjourned.